Things that are not on the agenda that we would just take under advisement and it would be an agendized item later on. Item number three, conflict of interest. Is there any conflicts of any of the board members of any items on the agenda?
No.
No.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the July 7th agenda.
So moved.
Motion. Motion by Van Duzen, second by. Gable. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries.
Madam Chair, do you want to repeat those phone numbers because I, the stream is just now up and running.
All right, the two phone numbers if individuals would like to call in and address the board during the open portion of our meeting are 882-6248 and 882-6297. Okay, item number five, action to approve the minutes of the June 23rd, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Monthly reports, and we will be starting to do our, going through the budget, so as our department heads do their monthly report, we will also have our budget information from them. So, extension. If you would like to come up.
Just want to let you know, we're still prepping, I'm on week nine of the 4H summer series that we're doing throughout the state and other kids are joining in. So I'm working on week nine of that. So just wrapped up our week five that I was part of and now I get to judge some of the contests for that. Our achievement day packets will be going out this week. Kind of got to really get in depth with that. Achievement days will be a little bit different this year. We're trying to maintain safety for our 4H members, volunteers, and our families for that. So to stay within the SDSU guidelines, we are limited to groups of 50 for physical distancing and that. So most of our shows will be a trailer in, trailer out, so they'll show that day and they'll go home that day. There won't be any animals staying in the barns overnight this year. In June it is a limit of 15. So just, I mean, in July, sorry, July, I'm all messed up with my months. So in, in July, it is 15. So now that we've met, gotten to July here, if we have an approved safety plan by Dr. Tanner, we can have a little bit more than 15 if we can. We just got approved for our horse show that will be held in Clark. So we'll have a few more than 15 at that, but they'll be physically distanced with their trailers and limited with the number of classes they can be in and stuff too, so that we can move the show along and. We will not be interview judging. No, the kids will actually be bringing in their exhibits the week before achievement days, the Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday before. And then the judging will just happen the same time it usually does, but no youth will be there. So the exhibits will be there and I'll know how many I have in each area also by then too. So then I'll know if you need to come or not. So, for that. Masks will still be strongly encouraged throughout achievement days and our horse show that will be happening. So our horse show will be July 22nd in Clark. We work with Clark, Connington, and Spink together to host that. We don't have large numbers in any of the counties, so we work together on that show. Last week, we lost a great dear dog leader that passed away from cancer, so we'll dearly miss him, but we have some new volunteers that are ready to work with our youth and start our dog program this month now that we can do some things with the youth. So we'll be keeping them at different times so that we can keep under the 15 youth per, per time period there. So special foods is actually being held virtually. And so that's still being held next week again, July 14th and 16th. And so they're judged virtually on Zoom. So and we are going to have our fashion review contests, but kids will come in with their outfits and then leave. And I'm going to be recording them in front of our bulletin board to put together a little video of the fashion review. Since we won't be able to have a live fashion show, we're going to be able to have a show with, through a video. So something different.
4H barbecue?
Huh?
4H barbecue is usually.
Yeah, we won't have a 4H barbecue. No, we won't have a 4H barbecue or concession stand this year. Just all these different things. There's lots of things to think about through all this and try, just trying to keep everybody safe and stuff. And, and things could change before that too. We don't know, that's still a month away. So that's August 3rd through the 6th is the dates of our achievement days. So not knowing what could change before that. So.
Sounds like you guys have really thought outside the box though on all of these different opportunities that you're still allowing them to do it, but in a different way. That's good that they're.
Trying to offer something for them to showcase what they've been working on all year. So, yeah, it's, it's a lot of thinking. So.
Did you say achievement days is August 3rd through the 6th?
August 3rd through the 6th. Not a lot will be happening on the 3rd besides, the public presentations will be that morning. Probably not open to the public either, but so that's the hard part about it. We won't be able to have as many public people there this year because of trying to just keep our families safe and keep them physically distanced themselves.
All right, very good. Do you want to do the budgets portion? Are you ready for that? All right. So we'll go to the extension. Page 56.
Yes, she's, she's got it. I had this, so. My desk is full of this stuff right now. I'm trying to find everything.
Good morning.
Good morning, Becky.
Everybody ready?
Yep.
Okay, I'll just run through it briefly. We did do some standard cost of living 3% increases on the wages. You'll see that for both the office staff as well as the county share for the 4H advisor. The other, we had a couple of decreases in there, but you'll see some increases in the insurance, which we see each year. We took our 2020 actual costs. We projected a 10% increase in our health insurance. We projected a dollar increase per employee on the dental, which I think has been pretty standard throughout the years. Our workers' compensation, we also took, we incorporated 10% estimated increase. We decreased our publishing, which is something we're not, we're not using a whole lot of anymore. So we put a little decrease in there as well as our repairs and maintenance. We are seeing those expenses decrease a little each year too. So we, we decreased those in our budget as well. With regard to supplies, travel, utilities, all that remains the same as in previous years. So there's really not a whole lot of changes in there. That's pretty much it. It's pretty cut and dry, pretty simple. Are there any questions or concerns at all with what we did?
So, did you already say, Becky, that so on line 429.10, the 4H advisor said there's a little increase, that's just, just a cost of living?
Yes, yes. And there should have been supporting documentation from SDSU as well with that. That's, that's also a recommendation from SDSU.
Oh, there wasn't anything from SDSU.
You didn't get that? Okay. I thought I had sent that into you. I haven't.
Looks reasonable, but.
Yeah, I do have, I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought I had sent that into you. I do have that, I can get it.
Just send it to me and I'll.
I'll send it when I get back to the office. But yeah, that's, we get documentation from SDSU for our portion. We pay for Jody's salary. And that's, that's what it is right there.
Question, Becky. This curiosity, what do we charge for like an auction sale when they have an auction out there?
Our standard, what's customary for an auction is to have like a one day, like a Saturday sale with a Friday move in. That is about $280 for the auctions. And they're also required to provide a certificate of insurance as well.
I think we reviewed all those, was that last year or two years ago? Is it time to do it again or are we all right?
We did it probably about, I would say four years ago or so already. I can look, time flies. What you think is two years is probably four, I don't know. I would have to look, but yeah, we did it not too recently.
It's probably not, I don't know, it's kind of a weird time, you know, as, as far as with the club and everything to do that, but we probably should be looking at that again. And.
It'll stay on our sheet when it was updated. We should know for sure, but.
Do we have a lot on the agenda for auctions? Have you had a lot of requests?
They're starting to come in now. We haven't had anything in the building since March. Everybody is canceled. But I did get a call yesterday from, from one of the auctioneers that we, that uses our building quite a bit. And he said his phone is, is ringing off the hook, people trying to get auctions. So he called and got a bunch of dates, available dates. So hopefully we'll get some more bookings back in there. The building, building's pretty quiet right now. Understandable. Something like that draws in a lot of people.
Okay.
Any questions?
You've got whatever necessary stuff to cover in case there'd be something with the COVID thing.
There, there is a waiver that they need to sign that I had liability individuals looked at and she thought it looked fine.
That would be for attendees too, coming into the facility.
No, just the individuals renting it, not the attendees.
It's the one we've had.
Right.
Yeah. It's not COVID specific, but it does have that.
Right.
Verberage.
Well, it was drafted by Patrick when he was here.
Yeah.
So, so it should cover, I would think.
Indemnity.
Right. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we will move on to the veterans service and get your report and your budget. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, we, we've been very busy with meeting with veterans and families of the veterans since we.
Can you just give your name for everybody so we know who's.
Todd Rose, Veteran Service Officer, Connington County. But anyway, we've been trying to make as many appointments as possible, just to kind of limit the personnel and to provide a uninterrupted service to the appointments that we have there. Sometimes we get kind of stacked up and it's not a lot of room there. So we've been trying to have a couple chairs out our front door for people to sit, so we don't have so many people in the office there. I attended several local veterans organizations meeting this last month. I meet with the commanders of the local veterans organizations tonight at the VFW and kind of go over the next month's agendas with them. I attended my first veterans court on the 29th of June with the intentions of continuing my training in the education and the future involvement in that program. On the CBOC, just an update here, is open to limited patient one-on-one appointments. Current plan is to be back at 100%, hopefully by the end of August. They are taking blood draws by appointment and they've been using the telephonic healthcare, telehealth. It seems like the veterans are very receptive to that and are kind of liking that, especially the people that are living away from the community here right now.
Which, I did my physical that way, it worked very well.
So. I think that'll be a way of the future for the VA. I think you'll see more and more of that from that standpoint. Mark's Auto did do a little work on our DAV Explorer. We made three trips over the last month to Sioux Falls. Established a shared hard drive for the VSO in our, our area. And then we're working on building process and procedure binders for the office to kind of help efficiency. And basically, it's kind of a way for Peg to capture some of her knowledge that she has, because she just goes about and does stuff. And it's like, well, I need to know how to do this too. So that seems to be going good for us there right now. South Dakota Cemetery, just an update on that, the area down there in Sioux Falls, it's north of I-90. Just north of, where 229 comes out to I-90, that cemetery is going to be north there. They should have the dirt work just about completed. And it looks like it'll be open for use in December of 20, limited, and then completed in spring of 21. There's currently already 500 veterans pre-qualified to be laid to rest there. FY Connington County VA expenditures, this just came in yesterday. According to the VA for 2019, the expenditure was 50, over $15 million. And that includes healthcare that is being done here. It also includes compensation and pension. Also a little bit in insurance and vocational rehab also. So you can kind of see, we have 2,031 veterans according to them, and we have about 852 that are currently using the VA healthcare system in some way or form. Also, just came out last week, the South Dakota Veterans Affairs has published a job announcement for a new field service officer that will be stationed in Watertown and work in the northeast area of South Dakota. I don't know exactly when that final date is, when, when they're going to be hiring that, but that should be in the future here. Future events, I do, I have my physical scheduled finally for the, to be able to drive the DAV vehicle. I've got that scheduled here coming up. Sea of Goodwill Meeting in 31 July. Request approval to travel to the State Veterans Affairs Conference, 24 through 27 August in Pierre. The DAV vehicle process, still kind of in a holding pattern on that, just kind of waiting for that application process to come out and then move forward with that. Possible request to get a laptop signature pad sooner than later. I have it in the budget for next year. I don't know the exact procedures of if we could do that. That's really all I have. Is there any questions of me?
Other than the travel, do you have a travel request? That's the only thing you'll.
We have a travel request form that you'll need to fill out whenever you want to travel for county business. So just remind me to send it to you and you can, it's a word document.
Cindy on his laptop request, he can just see you for that and decide what needs to be done. That's in the budget for next year?
It's in the budget for next year, but you can't, I mean, we can't, we have to pay for it when it comes. So if you wanted it this year, you would need board authorization. And then we would just have to note that you probably would need commissioner's contingency funds at the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's not in your budget, but if it's an emergency, the board would allow, could allow you to purchase it now and then supplement your budget at the end of the year when needed.
Then we can pull it out of next year's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that something you need to do, Todd, or what's the?
Well, you know, I've had a couple instances just this last month, meeting with veterans, having to go home to their place of location. It's just, would be very convenient to be able to do the paperwork and get their automated signature there at that time. I've also thought about maybe not doing the laptop and maybe looking at, oh, like a tablet that they could utilize that from that. So it's, it's, we're still working that. I just think that it would, could be a benefit when going out. And I haven't really been to any of the local, like assisted living or nursing homes, because you can't work, contact them from that standpoint. So I just think it would be a good benefit for us from that.
Well, I guess I would just recommend to you to explore and figure out what you need and then come back in front of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Put it on the agenda and then we can discuss it. But yeah, it's, and it's probably something that going forward, it's going to be utilized.
Yeah.
I think this is a new wave of how we'll be doing things, so.
Like to be able to have you work efficiently.
Yes.
Makes sense. Appreciate it.
Am I going to talk to budget?
Yeah, you're ready.
Okay.
Everybody have it on page 23?
Then they all have that, that you all should have in your packet or your book. Todd gave you an extensive explanation sheet, so.
Yeah, that's where I'll kind of brief off of that. Majority of the budget personnel data, bottom line is that there's going to be about a $2,000 reduction in that area. That goes from, from my wages to where Al was before. So we have a reduction there. And on the next, the next part where it talks more about utilities and equipment, stuff of that nature there. You'll notice that there is basically an, an increase there because I requested $14,200 to update the DAV vehicle. Also, I had put in there $3,300 for updating our workstations. That was just a quote that I got from office peeps there. There's the computer roughly. I had gotten that from Connecting Point. They came back with a figure of about $1,847. So that was where that is. The, the phone system over there that we currently have, it's just kind of confusing from that standpoint. So I have, sometimes the, we have two lines that come in, but if Peg's on a line, I don't know from my phone, it doesn't light up. And there's some other voice messaging that some of the other agencies have here in the county that it would be nice to have. So we have that. And we added a newspaper subscription just to help track the obituaries from around the area and whatnot. So that's that. I also had a little bit of an increase for travel. The American Legion and the VFW both have certification training. One is in, they're out east. I don't give you the exact days there, but, or locations. But I would like to try to get to one of them maybe next year. That way, they just give you a whole week's worth of training. You get certified to work with them. So I, I just think that could be a good benefit, but I'm not, I'm not there yet in my education to go someplace like that, because put that in the budget there. Other than that, basically, I'd have an increase from last year's budget of about $19,621.
Am I missing a page or I have the documentation or the, the, from Connecting Point, but I have nothing. Do you, is it more than one page? I don't have anything, you know, like for the, that van or the $14,000 you said you put in.
That's in 426.
Yeah, it was in the middle.
It's in my night of 426.
On his explanation. Go to the next sheet, in the middle of 426.
Oh, it's, it's not in this portion.
No, he has the explanation stuff on the page.
So.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just, so, so 426, that's where the, the laptop and signature pad and all that resides?
Yes, all that's in 426.
On that van though, you were working on trying to get some grant funding. Have you heard anything yet back from them or do we know where that's at at all?
You know, the application process isn't supposed to come out until April from, or not April, September, from what I was told. That $14,200 would basically be our half of that, pending that we get approved for the grant. And they kind of, from the people that I talked to, it's kind of, yes, there is a chance not, but more likely you're going to get that grant.
So you did figure that is our.
Yes, that would be our portion roughly.
Now, that is included in that monthly request, $157,647. That is included in there.
No, it is, it is in there.
That's, line 46 was $22,100.
That's the.
Our shares included in that.
Yeah. That's why that bumped up so much.
Okay.
Okay. Have a good day.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd. Have a good day, thanks. All right, let's move up to the welfare then for her monthly report and budget review. That would be Sarah.
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 He's kind of gotten combined with his new title.
I was just letting Todd know, until we, I have, we have an extra Microsoft Pro that we're switching over to. We haven't. If he wants to borrow that to test it, he can, because you can log on as your, your own. So if that gives him, because sometimes it's nice to try something. So I was. So he can try that and see what he thinks too, if he wants, if he's interested to see if that's an option. Because with those signature packs, sometimes you don't know what's compatible or not. Okay. Good morning.
Morning, Sarah.
Morning.
Just a couple of things. I just wanted to know, Linda, when she was working for my office, she gave me a sheet of paper when she was done for the scanning. She had scanned 916 files and many of those had 100 plus pages. And she said it was really ideal for her to do it the way we did it, where she wouldn't get interrupted, because with the scanner, with the PDF, once you, if you get interrupted, you have to start all over. So, so that was really good. And I, I'm just delighted to have a lot more space in the drawers and stuff too. And then it'll be easier to get that information to the auditors sometimes for collections. So that was a really good thing. So I thanked her for her service. She is also, I think, helped with the elections and has now volunteered to, possible volunteer driver for the VA. So she's fantastic. So I have lots, lots of positives to say about her. Very glad that we had that opportunity. During COVID, we were, my office is able to provide services remotely. And really what that came a lot of is because of the, the years of how we've transitioned. So I'm happy with that, because if something were to ever go for the worst down the road, I know that we can still serve our, our people in the community. I think I heard it, Mayor Karen said it once and I thought it was so great. Prepare for the worst, but expect the best, hope for the best. And so I just kind of had, had that mindset of going with that forward. So I know that if for something ever were to happen, we can, we can provide services remotely. So that is good. We had a few kinks, more kinks we had to work through. But it wasn't like a bulk, total 100% transition because of the years of how we've been changing our services and applying that. So that really, there just was, I was thankful for that. Let's just put that way. So just looking at the report and stuff, one of the things I wanted to do is also add, what I, give you what the services that we provided, I also track when we're working with somebody, the hours, time spent. So I think that might also help, because when I do the report and we do the referrals, I don't put anything about the work I do and the time it takes. So to start with, March through June, we had 42 medical and that was 160 hours were spent. Housing was 18 people provided services and 18 and a half hours were spent on that. Economic assistance, and that was 10. And that's kind of when people give you what I guess for, back, better term is their laundry list. They come up and they have, they give you 12 things, 15 things that they maybe need, or three or four. They give you multiple things. And you're trying to address those, help them with those. That, 28 hours was spent on that. Homeless. We had eight individuals, 36 hours spent on that. That makes sense. A lot of times they have multiple barriers that we have to cross and help them out with that. Burial, we had eight, and that's 25 hours were spent on that. In addition to that, three of those were paid. Three were non-county residents, so it takes time to, to determine that and find the residency. If you can't trace back the residency, it, it does become an obligation of the county. And two, we're calling for pre-planning. And so then you kind of help walk them through that and stuff. So. Utilities, we had seven, four and a half hours were spent on that. Transportation, we had five, five hours were spent on that. That was unique during the COVID, because even if someone had the funds to do the bus line, there wasn't services. So that was quite unique. So what we ended up doing, like with one individual, the individual needed to get to a safe place. And we called on some different groups that, that do that type of transport and asked them to help out. So that was unique. That was definitely unique there. Something I've never had to. So that was unique, that was definitely unique there, um, something I've never, uh, had to do, so that was new. Uh, E S G clients, three and twenty hours was spent on that. Prescription, we had one, but, uh, three hours were spent on that. So.
Sorry, Madam Chair, can you just say the hours again, what, starting with the medical?
Absolutely. Medical, hundred and sixty eight hours. Housing, eighteen and a half. Economic assistance, twenty eight. Homeless, thirty six. Burial, twenty five. Utilities, four and a half. So I like utilities. Transportation, five. E S G client with three and that spent twenty hours. Prescription was three. Okay, so then, uh, if we want to go, so the next graph is just gives you that percentage of what, working with. The bulk was, uh, medical at that time and then the rest was pretty even. And then we can just go on to the next slide.
I have a question.
Yes.
When you said E S G client, we don't have E S G funds, is that through the resource center that you?
Yes, we have, yeah, right, we, they provide the, the funds, but the, my office does the case management work for just the homeless people that are non-veterans. If they're veteran, we refer them to the veteran E S G. If there are domestic violence, we refer them to the Beacon Center. And it's, and then also, we've also referred these individuals to ICAP, they've been told there's no services. So we don't, we don't do that. I do not do that unless it's, we have to, because it is a lot of time consuming. But if, if that individual's gonna be homeless and everywhere else has said no, then that's when we, we, we provide that service. But I, the Beacon Center writes the checks, um, I go through them, we do the homeless paperwork. Because what they didn't want to do, the state had really encouraged the Beacon Center to partner with the homeless and add that. They don't have the capacity to do it, but, uh, also they don't want the confusion of they serve domestic violence, sexual assault. So the ability to, um, for this office to do that, we tried it, uh, to do that for the homeless. And then we, I can call and say, here's, here's the situation, can we apply for funds through you? And then they get all the case notes and they get the credit for the hours if they want it to, for their additional grants. But it is only if every other option does not, does not work. It's the last, last, but it's a tool that we have in our tool belt, which I am very thankful for, cause a lot of these people I wouldn't have, we just wouldn't have anything, so. And then also because we're working with them already, it gives us an indication whether they can actually follow through on that program. That program requires case management, except for COVID right now, we don't have to, but it's still beneficial to them. But we can do a little bit more with that and then within their, their funds. Does that answer your question?
Hmm.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so, um. Did you have questions?
Did you, was that, did you want to go to the next one?
Yes, yes, this is great, great. Okay, so, uh, types of services and then the cost avoidance that we had. So with the medical, we didn't have any costs, but the cost avoidance was about thirty one thousand three hundred and ninety one fifty five. Burial, we had a cost of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty eight, the savings were seven, seven twenty five. Um, housing, we didn't have any costs, but the avoidance was three thousand three hundred and sixty. Utilities, no cost, cost avoidance, two eighty. E S G client, um, what I wrote is the cost avoidance is two hundred and forty, because that's, that's what the county pays. A lot of times two hundred and forty the max, I just write that, we can make exceptions at time. But for one individual, I just want to know, the E S G paid two thousand seven hundred and eighty five dollars towards background. And this, these are individuals who were not receiving their unemployment. Both of the adults were on that waiting list and both did not receive their, um, stimulus checks in the way, so we finally did get that through, that will help them. But they had received help from two other agencies, but that didn't resolve the problem and they were still gonna have an eviction. And there, I think there was six kids, so it's really difficult to find a place. Um, so moving forward, we do anticipate they're gonna have a need, but because all these, these other agencies have been used, they're not gonna have option to that. Most agencies are one time a year type services, so we can kind of keep them on that E S G, uh, if that need arises, um, in the future. July thirty first is the last day that extra funds for that unemployment is, 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 uh, expected. So I think we're gonna see a lot of people and there's still people that are waiting to get that unemployment. So they've been unemployed since March and have not gotten unemployment check yet. So we've got people right now that we're working with since March have not had income and maybe some of them have gotten the tax, some have not. So it's, it's a hit and miss, so we always do verify that with the unemployment, okay? Um, let's see, oh, I suppose I need to finish. Um, prescription. We didn't have a cost, the cost avoidance was a hundred and eighty twenty five. Transportation, uh, we had cost avoidance of eighty dollars. Homeless, this, the cost, you know, I actually need to re, calculate that number, it's five hundred and thirty a month. So since this was March through June, you'd take that times.
Did you mention prescription? Cause that's not on your report. It's not on the.
Okay, my apologies. What was it? Prescription, um, there was no cost, but we had a cost avoidance of a hundred and eighty twenty five.
Okay.
It probably is outside my box.
That used to be a higher number always for that prescription. What is going on with people not utilizing that program anymore or?
Are, so are you referring to the N A C O? Okay, so I don't get that report anymore for N A C O.
Oh.
So this, this is just something that would have fallen to the county.
They kind of, we used to get that.
Using those cards?
As far as I know, it's just that N A C O, uh, the, we had, they had an individual representative that would just report, give that right, report and they've lost that individual. I don't think they've replaced their, at least I haven't had access, but that's a good reminder, I should check on that. That helps, um, individuals a little bit above, above my office level. So, um, that's people that have income, uh, that wouldn't qualify for, um, uh, other programs like the Medicaid or the prescription assistance programs. And we just have them at Hy-Vee, the Walgreens and that to utilize. But what we have found is some individuals, uh, the other prescription assistance programs are cheaper. And so basically like with this one, we had an individual, the antibiotic that they, they needed was, um, uh, retail cost, three, four hundred dollars, um, because of HIPAA. It takes me three weeks to get information back from Walgreens, well, that's not liable for somebody. So what we can do is look for cards and stuff. So we were able to get a prescription assistance card through some research, find, find that, enroll them into that. And then they were able to get, I think, their out-of-pocket costs, which they could afford was somewhere between four to nine dollars. So that's, that's what we do, we find the best deal. For me, the people I work with, the N A C O card is great for like the people in the donut hole or different things, but not necessarily for the clientele I serve, so. If that makes sense.
Can I ask a question? Um, you mentioned the unemployment, difficulty in getting the unemployment checks, is that, is that a lot of people or just a few? Or is, and do you have an idea of what the nature of the problem is, is it just a kind of a?
Well, I'm not gonna see the people that got it. So, um, so I think, I commend the state for what they're doing, the volumes that they've had to increase and to be able to do that and then work remotely. I would say, based on the numbers, we've seen a few, it's, it's not a lot, because otherwise we would be so inundated. But I can't, I don't have a comparison, I'm not gonna see the people that received it necessarily. I do anticipate, um, we will start, we are already starting to see people that got their stimulus checks. So that, what we are seeing is individuals who maybe didn't get the unemployment, um, for reasons such as maybe, uh, they got sick right before it enacted, so it's still not qualified and they feel processed as a while. Or maybe they weren't working or working sporadically, a lot of people do a lot of odds and ends jobs, couldn't do anymore, so. Uh, so we're seeing those people that fell through that, that gap a little bit. But they still had the stimulus, so.
Now, obviously you're sending them, I, I know that ICAP received some funding through, uh, federal dollars to help some of those individuals. I mean, they got quite a, a boost, so that should help.
Yep, yeah, absolutely, we do that and then those that, a lot of those that we're seeing though, if they, they had gotten help last year and so then they get sent back to us. So if anybody's had, had gotten help through them and then we do, but yeah, it, we do work back and forth, we work really well. And sometimes it's multiple. They're a great resource and so Salvation Army, if it's a one time that can help and it alleviates the situation, which, which if someone can get into the income-based housing, it definitely is. And they do deposits, which we do not do. We don't do deposits, so. And then energy assistance right now, I'll go over that maybe, energy assistance is.
Oh, sure.
Has some funds extra, but I'll go over that in my budget, so, um. So next goes the percentage of referrals. Uh, basically, the reason this number is a little bit low is there was some timeframe between March and April where ICAP didn't have funds. You can't refer them to a place that doesn't have it. So the referrals are a little bit lower on that and also energy assistance at that time, um, their funds and March thirty first. So with those referrals, your breakdown, are you percentage of your numbers? The energy assistance was four individuals, low income housing was one.
My apologization, put that in black background, you guys can't read it.
Number, they see an ICAP, but I can't read the percentage.
Eighteen percent.
Right, that's why I'm constantly my glasses up and down, cause I get those. Department of Social Services, D S S, that is, uh, two. The veteran E S G was one and I love that program, they have a lot more flexibility than any of the E S Gs. I love it when they're qualified. Department of Labor is one. Beacon Center is one.
Sarah, what does E S G stand for?
Emergency Services Grant.
Okay.
And it is where the federal government is pushing the dollars.
Okay.
What was low income housing again?
Uh, low income housing was one. ICAP was two.
Okay, that's the one I.
D S S was one or two?
One.
Oh, D S S, I put two.
I have two for D S S.
I think maybe you were the ICAP number.
So that we start this over, okay, energy assistance four, low income housing one, D S S one, ICAP two. Veteran E S G one, Department of Labor one, Beacon Center one.
So you said it was eighteen percent on the ICAP number.
Yep. There's the only one that I can't really read very well.
Unless it would have the black.
There's a secret, you can change the color.
Yeah, and sometimes what I, what I see when I send it changes it too. Any questions on the budget or on the welfare report? Alright, you ready to move on to, um, your budget question? Everybody there?
Everybody there?
Page thirty four. Okay.
Orange tab.
Might be a different color for everyone.
I saw that.
Are we good? Are we? Okay. Oh, well, I'll start with some, couple, uh, maybe just, uh, talking points. Um, I know we were talking about location, um, at the same time, I also know our budget, we're not sure where things are gonna be at and where we're at, it's really cheap. Um, and affordable, at this time, where we're at should work okay, uh, because we are transitioning more to phone calls. And then a lot with these waivers that we have going on through the federal government, we are able to do things without signatures. So before we went, weren't able to, so there's a lot of flexibility, more flexibility that we had. So I, I, I just share that with you guys, cause you, you're, you have to deal with the costs and then you're having to deal with the location, um, on that. If, and, and because of email and technology, we just send a quick email. So a lot of people, what, what we do is they call, we do an assessment and then we determine what's the best direction for you to go. And so we kind of give that map and we're gonna continue to work on following up more. So basically that, a lot of that, my case manager is gonna monitor those individuals so that we know that, hey, you did get connected, you did understand. This didn't work, okay, what's our next option? And sometimes in the beginning for individuals with the crisis, it's, it's throwing a, they need housing and they need it today. And we might have to kind of throw out five different directions and see which one's gonna land, so it can be a little bit overwhelming. Uh, for example, right now, the homeless individual, one homeless individual working with, that was in a hospital homeless, we're trying to get a location, a place for that individual before they were released. You know, the nurse, it wasn't a Cottington County resident, but not hospital in Cottington County. And speaking with the nurse, she, she said, we have one person, one nurse working with this individual full-time. They, they did that full-time, committed to that person with all the paperwork. If you guys could see the paperwork that people have to fill, it is just ridiculous. And I'm a competent person and I still will get told how I'm doing it incorrectly over and over and over again. So imagine if you're in a position that you're in crisis and you have to make sure that your line does, your X doesn't go below the line or all the paperwork's thrown out. I mean, it's just really cumbersome and you don't have, you don't have your identification. So we kind of help, help people with that, but also you don't know which avenue is gonna work. So, uh, it's a concept, it's hard for people to understand. So we had that and then we had to get Department of Human Services involved, so they've spent hours, I'm sure, I've put about, I haven't tracked it, I've tracked it, but I haven't added it, probably about twenty hours. So just gives you an idea, sometimes we have to build an army for some of these individuals to kind of figure out what we're working with. Similar situations, but sometimes just some different. Um, I know you guys have been talking a lot about cell phones, I do want to be like, you know, I do use mine a lot, especially for conference calls that are long distance. It doesn't tie up the line, so people can still get in and I use that phone. Um, I also use the sti- stipend to upgrade the phone system so that I could actually utilize it for work and more stuff, otherwise. Um, and I, so I think the cost of what the stipend is counteracts when the cost will be, they are, uh, outside for other things. And it's my ability to, in between, like for example, if we're working with the professionals, we can text back and forth, so a lot of us.
Line is that number?
Um.
The utility.
Utilities, four twenty eight point one, per, office utilities.
Unfortunately.
The other utilities would be assistance to the indigent.
Okay, so, um, one of the things we do anticipate, um, an increase in poverty levels. Uh, I'm, so you're gonna see within this budget, a transition of funds. Uh, we did, uh, you know, kind of monitor a lot of the grants to see what we can look at. What we run into, a lot of the grants, that the paperwork is more in the cost of the survey, what you have to put upfront is more than what you, you can receive. We did have a grant that we could have applied for, had we kept the Behavior Health Deflection Program. So I'm gonna take that information in my mind and just say, how can we maybe, uh, benefit through a case manager in my office to maybe access some of that? And that would offset some of those costs of a case manager at that time. Um, as far as, with those transitions, as far as stepping up, um, here's my comments, is the current jail population is running lower than average. The average share of the de- detainees right now are for violent fine, crimes. Stepping up is designed for the non-violence, so it's getting outside of the capacity. And so my recommendation is to just continue the law enforcement, if you guys get the chance to talk to them, law enforcement and judges, continue doing what you're doing when the COVID started. So when COVID started, a lot of these, I, the, because I think because of the stepping up, people had these concepts, hey, we can ticket release. So I think we, we benefited from what we've done for that, ticket, ticket and release and being able to get those out until, till things can get to that position. The numbers are pretty, pretty low, but from my perspective, it, that was, it, I need to transition back to the, those that are for beforehand. And I'm able to do that, that, that's gonna be more, I anticipate, let me say it that way, I project and anticipate that's gonna be the focus that we need.
I have one question.
Interject on that one.
Yeah.
Just, and maybe Troy, I mean, some, some of that, yeah, I know that the citationable kind of crimes. Yeah, yeah, okay, just, just so everybody knows. Judicial and criminal justice system, the county is here to support it.
I absolutely, yes.
No discretion.
Yeah, yes.
So.
But I, I think it's worthy to, to, to have that comments to people, just letting them know that, you know, hey, this is what you were doing. That idea probably, you know, for me, I first heard of those concepts through the stepping ups, I think we benefited from that. But hey, if you guys can continue to do that, and the main reason too for that is two things how it happened. When, when you're housing these lower risk offenders and since we can't do trials in the high risk and where violent are there, you're gonna have two things happen. They become better, better victims or better criminals. We don't want either one, so, so we're in that transition. So just continue to, to, if you have that opportunity, continue to have that conversation of the benefits of that. But we don't, we want, we don't want the violent people out.
Can I ask a question? Where are you at on your budget?
Well, it's, it's gonna, it's just kind of a background to explain some of the changes and stuff in that budget, so.
But, yeah, we're going line by line, but I don't know which line you're talking about now when you're saying that. So which line are you on in comparison that you're adding to your budget because of that reason, which line?
I, I'm not, but it'll, it'll, it'll make sense here in just a little bit, this is kind of some background information. I, I'm not, but it'll, it'll, it'll make sense here in just a little bit. This is kind of some background information to understand some increase and decreases. So with the shift of the economics, the need is for my office is to, I, we're going to see, I anticipate to see the back with the impoverished. We also anticipate an increase in need for housing and utilities and the budget changes reflects what is anticipated. We, what we're seeing is when people are coming in right now, they're three, four months behind. And so it's, it's a little bit more difficult to, to get those services. We also, I have to keep in mind when I made this budget and still today, there are unknowns, such as like the HEROES Act that's still. Out there, we don't anticipate the Senate to take this up till August. And those are things that'll affect this budget, but I don't, I don't have that till those come out. The Hope Act package was submitted. We don't expect it to take up till maybe August. With the NAXVA Committee, I get in a couple weeks sooner and, and am able to disseminate some of that information to our state agencies. And they said, you're getting that information a couple weeks before us. So that helps us as a state to put us ahead of the game behind. But that also gives me a look at what, we're usually behind the curve in South Dakota, so I can see what's happening on the outside. And we're usually not as negatively impacted as around. With what we see coming, I talked to Department of Social Service, our David Gaul with Energy Assistance. And he stated that right now, they've got more fundings. And they think that that should get them through the end of twenty twenty, but where he thinks that county might have more of a need is the twenty twenty-one. And that's, that'll reflect that increase in that Energy Assistance on that, utilities. We know that social services is received, as anticipated, to receive a five-fold increase in the social services block grant. And that's to help for these funds during emergencies. So these are all contingent, if these go through, I kind of anticipate some of it will. TANAF work requirements were suspended, there's increased funding in Energy Assistance. Homeless, the key thing with homeless, it's, it's going through ESG funding for homeless and at-risk. We are working with NACO and the, to see if we can help and the, for the homeless and the paperwork to get some of that redundancy of the paperwork reduced. So the numbers that can be helped can be increased. We do anticipate an increase in child tax or credit and EIC. The stimulus check for the second round is anticipated, is set at, it's not gone through, but twelve hundred dollars per person. Even including the children. And that's the independence and this also includes college students and disabled who were missed the first round. And that affects this decisions within the budget that we make locally. We're finding the requests that we receive are more complex with more barriers, but the clientele that we're working with are more capable and competent. So they're able to do a little bit more. And then. Rent, HUD and Public Housing Authorities paused evictions for low-income housing. However, those are expected to expire about the same time the supplemental unemployment benefit is set to expire. Rent has climbed faster than inflation. The Urban Institute reports that forty percent of rural renters are cost burdened. So then. That, those are, that's background information for kind of the budget. I, I would like to go over the rental housing that helps you determine why I switched that, can I do that before I go over those numbers? It just gives you an explanation of why these changes are happening.
Four twenty-four point one oh?
Between the rent and the point two and that, because there was a decrease in the four twenty-two. So what we're expecting, a lot of this information is, we'll go like, like, give me ten seconds, a slide max. So the next, next slide. The high, what, what has happened is high-income households have driven most of the growth in renters since twenty-ten. So what this does is that drives the new construction market. We're even seeing that in Cottington County. Next slide. I do the graphs because I know Lee likes, likes that. The strong growth in high-cost rentals has coincided with the dramatic decline in low-cost units. I work with the low cost, so we're seeing a dwindling supply of low-cost rental and that is low-income people at thirty thousand. Okay, next slide is while across, down across segments, vacancy rates are, for moderate and lower rentals are especially low. So we're running into where we can't find the vacancy in open places for those moderate places. Next slide. Despite, in twenty-eighteen, one in four renters spent more than half their income on rent. The recommended is thirty percent to thirty-five to be affordable. Seventy-two percent of renters, according to the Urban Institute, earned less than fifteen thousand annually. Okay, so this, this graph gives you the cost burden rates that people have and that affects my office budget. So then, yep, okay, so the number of assisted households has been essentially flat. We were seeing this even with the stimulus packets, they're not increasing the housing. Public Housing Authority or that, it's the ESD, which is different. The federally subsidized units have remained flat since two thousand and ten. So basically, we're seeing in just a decrease in vacancies and now we're going to see a decrease in people's income. But no more additional apartments, so that's what that in a nutshell means. Your renters spend disproportionately large shares of their income on housing, transportation and energy costs. So what happens when you have low-income renters, the large portion of their cost is just for the renting. And so that they have less for those additional needs and that's where, where they need those help that we're looking at.
The Y-axis, is that the percentage of, what was? Understand, okay, that's the average here. What's the Y-axis?
Which is the Y-axis, vertical. So that's the percentage of their income, so. So if you, if you look at the rent, then like if you're under thirty thousand, you're up to that forty and then. Commute can include any transportation costs, like in South Dakota, your vehicle, your payments, your car payments and insurance. And then the energy is your utilities, which includes your phones. So. And keep in mind, South Dakota will rule, we'll have lower income than that. So, and what, according to Urban Institute, in the Midwest, about seventy-two percent are below fifteen thousand for income. So then you're, this what present, so here's what we see, that high housing class prevent. Renters from being able to spend on basic health needs such as your food and healthcare, okay? So those are things that you know the need and it's just worthy to mention because especially we see a lot of people come from city and move and stuff. I know the Native American population, Cottington County, isn't really high, but you get right up into Roberts and it's, it jumps up. But they are disproportionately affected and so. So is the Hispanic and those are our two ethnicity groups, so those are the things to be aware of. And so then this one, and I apologize, I couldn't, I don't know how to get it bigger. But the share, this is specific to Watertown, South Dakota, which helps me determine that budget. The share renter households with cost burdens in Cottington County is thirty-one point three, the national average is forty, so we're doing pretty good there. But then the severe cost bor, burdens, and that's the number I'm going to be looking at, working with is the sixteen point four, okay? So then. Looking at that information and those trends. Back to the, the, the budget, what I. And the reason I mentioned the stepping up is, so then what I did with line four twenty-two with the professional services. I didn't really have a lot of change in the care core for wage and salaries, so that kind of kept the same at that. So there's not much change there. So then we go to the personal services for the care for, the four twenty-two, the professional services. What I did is, that was money I had shifted over before when we were seeing the savings with the rents, utilities and health insurance. So now with the things where the country and the economy is, we anticipate this to go up, so that's been decreased. I decreased that forty-three thousand three hundred. And so then. The, the next line item, the four two, two point ten and four two, let's see, four two two ten through. Four two two point five is all your, your medical. The four point four, right now, we have four point four million in poor relief applications. And just to give a little bit of understanding, so there's two processes when somebody applies. The hospital can apply for care for, for people they feel that are indigent. The first step they do is PRA, which is a little less of a step. And then if they want funding, they do what we, poor relief application, that's the first step. So we get a poor relief application from the hospital that they anticipate moving this forward to the county to pay. If the, if the county is unable to find other services for this individual, it goes into request for payment. So request for payment is a lot higher. I want to try to work to always keep them out of that. So in twenty-fourteen, our poor relief, just to give you a comparison of the trends that are changing. Twenty-fourteen, our poor relief applications request was four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, request for payments was a hundred and twenty-three. I go now and I'm watching the trend. In twenty-eighteen, one point seven million is what I have for poor relief applications. And I've, when you work through those that you can get services or insurance for them or other ways for those to pay. They will not move forward to the request for payment. And so, but at, at this time, I have one point seven million and then I've got two hundred and forty-two thousand requests for payments. Now, when someone moves from the poor relief application, PRA, to request for payment, we take them off the PRA, but put them at the request for payment. That request for payment is more likely to be potential county cost. And then twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, one point two million is what I have for poor relief applications. With two point, right now, about three thousand have gone into request for payment. So what I'm seeing, and that trend has been going up since twenty-fifteen. Twenty-fifteen was eight hundred thousand and then it went back down twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, it's going up again. And in South Dakota, because we didn't expand Medicaid, anybody under a hundred percent federal poverty level is a high potential risk. For eligibility through that, so that's, so what I, that's what I monitor that. So that's with that four point four million in poor relief applications. I didn't increase that yet, I'm going to, I did increase that just five thousand. That was the money, the money that I had used that before was what we had for the mental health, so I, I don't have that to bring back. But what will happen is if we have multiple cases, we might have to just try to get it paid in the year following. So I, I keep working on that, that's the bulk of the work and that's what I do. So that only increased five thousand, even though we've seen a significant increase of requests. Then we go to four two point four one with the rent, so then I did increase that fifteen thousand. Urban Institutes, the one in four people don't feel like they can pay their rent. So, and then we also anticipate seeing more significant costs. It'll depend what our economy does and how fast we bounce back and where the federal dollars go. We continue with the homeless rent and so that's budgeted in there. It's an increase because of the current contract. And then there really wasn't any change from, from the office repair, food supplies. And then the office supplies is reduced because there's no, no new equipment. Kept the prescription drug the same. If people start losing their insurance, we may see an increase in that. Medical equipment, that's really would have covered you maybe one or two people, so it really just covers if you have that one person that has that need. Travel, kept that at four, five hundred, we do utilize Salvation Army a lot for that. Office travel, that's obviously still unknown with COVID, but that's the same as last year. And then increase the utilities based on the information that we pulled, ten thousand to twenty. Office utility stays the same, catastrophic stays the same, the health insurance, we increased that. We're always in a better position if we can provide someone health insurance and having to pay for that, that medical, so we can take more of a look at that. And then burial stayed the same. So that first information kind of gave you a background of the thinking behind of those changes. And then potential need, and like I said, there's still so many unknowns, we don't know what's going to happen with these different funding programs and packages. But at some point, we're not going to be able to continue those.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a couple of questions. So, okay, you mentioned, just kind of work backwards, you mentioned travel, I don't see that. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong section, are there, do we have more than one section for care of the poor?
There's four two seven, this is travel for the indigent and four two seven two, which is my office travel. I just kept the numbers the same, it's really hard to get an estimate.
Not seeing those numbers in.
If you look on the.
You're in public welfare. That's why.
Well, it goes in care of the poor, care of the.
Care of the poor is where you need to be.
Right, that's where. Okay, I see, I see what I did wrong. One que, the other question I had with our discussion earlier about. You know, the case management and ICAP and working together on that, does that have to, just, you know. And then looking at possibly a new place for, for. You guys and the, the Veterans Office, Veteran Service Office, so that might be something that we just, I, we can't really solve that discussion now. Just to, I guess, kind of keep that in mind, that that might affect some, you know, some of these numbers to some extent. So like your, your office rental, I think.
I think, I think that goes from government.
And then, so then the discussion on, like, I don't know, have we gotten anything from? ICAP to buy us a proposal or something, okay. Are we, okay.
An email should be coming, I think they're going to send it to you.
So, but that might, that might help us clarify a little bit of that, so that's the case management part. And could you refresh my memory about what you said, like where, you, you mentioned. This, maybe it's in the salary line, so like if you have that other person in your office, that, you know, say whether it's a part-time person or someone. Or another case manager, where would, is that in four eleven?
I didn't increase or change, it's what's been approved by the board, which is at nineteen hours. So that's employee number two.
Where is?
Four eleven, the first line, yeah, that's already in there and that's, there's no change.
Okay.
There's no change and I'm not asking for an increase in twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
We got a question on this page here, okay?
Okay.
I mean, at the very bottom, it says total of their expenditures, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ten. Then an increase of fifteen hundred ninety from the twenty twenty budget. Okay, is that the increase that you're requesting? But then on the next line, it says care of the poor total, three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy, increase of twenty-seven thirty.
Yeah, so.
I'm not sure where that number comes from.
Yep, yep, so Myron, if you look back, that's a good question, if you look back at the mid-level, see that total personal services? So you got your top quarter there, that's that eighty-five, nine sixty. So that breaks that down to the one thousand four, one hundred and forty increase and that's primarily due to the health insurance, okay? And then, so this total other expenditures, that's all for the care of poor. So that fifteen ninety increase, I just shifted the funds to, to, instead of increasing, shifted where. Instead of like professional services into the rent utilities that we anticipate. So that's that increase of fifteen ninety, so those two combined, that one thousand, one hundred and forty plus that fifteen ninety. So the one thousand one hundred and forty is the salary, plus the fifteen ninety of the care poor equals the total increase of two thousand, seven hundred and thirty. Does that help? Okay.
But your budget increase is only twelve hundred and thirty-one dollars. When we put the numbers in, I don't know if you.
Did it not, it's Excel.
It's a negative, if it's looking at it the other way, so your budget increase over twenty twenty is only one thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars.
So it's off.
But I think.
It's.
Looks at it. Differently.
Well, I swear I did the calculator too, because it struggles all the time.
Looking at your bottom line numbers, your increase is a marginal percent at less than, way less than one percent, it's only twelve hundred and thirty-one dollars.
So are we, I guess my concern on the. So four twenty-two, you're decreasing that number, are we, but you're, I guess, what I understand is that's not really going to be necessary. So we're essentially shifting that money elsewhere.
Right, with the anticipated need with the economy, I just anticipate long-term. We're going to have some needs and so instead of focusing on new programs right now, I, it, because that takes a lot of time. I've got to shift that back into where that originally came from, back into utilities, health insurance. And that, that's the anticipated best-case scenario, you know, we don't need that, that's great, we can. But human services ever changing, it changes with the economy. I anticipate with so much money that we've had thrown at these, that this upfront by the federal government, I don't know how long they can sustain that. Or will can sustain that. And it just depends on how long this whole thing lasts, a lot of unknowns, so that's.
That is the unknown.
Yeah, doing the best with your unknowns, hindsight will be twenty twenty, but based, that's why I gave that other information, just looking up. Different information, the big think takes, put it, put it all together, use their brains. Hopefully, best-case scenario, we won't. But we are finding it harder to place people with, we don't have openings, so. That low income housing, we are seeing. All right, any other questions about the budget or anything else? Seeing none. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. All right, item number seven, discussion, possible action to enact by resolution, the county's ban on open burning. Jamie, are you here on that regard, Cindy? Okay, if you want to, please come up. Sure. That would be wonderful. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Well, I brought along the, uh, the month forecast out of the wildlife, potential overview out of the state fire marshal's office. Um, currently, we in northeast South Dakota and east central, just south of us, our regions are in a low index. And along with that is the, the Palmer Index, uh, drought, modified drought index that's showing us in a plus three right now. And that means the wetter. And the minus would mean the drier. So right now we're at a three on their last thirty day precipitation models. And the state, uh, O E M office also sends us out the, uh, the extension center college version from S D S U and the School of Mines on the weaker climate, and they do not anticipate any large concerns this week again in our area, which is a weekly thing. I can forward this stuff to you guys if you wish, on a weekly basis or but right now I don't see the need, um, visiting with, again, with the, the county fire department stuff and is showing. And, uh, specifically with the last thirty days of moisture that we've had, so.
I think it's going to a good place and a good person right now, so you can handle it.
Okay.
You don't need to afford it.
Okay.
Just, uh, I would hope that we would keep it on the agenda.
I think it could change drastically within.
Yep.
Humidity levels right now, the way it reads, uh, along with the cropland, that's the coverage right now, I think they're very low risk, so.
Sounds good.
That's the, the update in the month of July, according to the state, looks in the good for now, but like I said, don't get changed.
Good.
Very well.
No burn ban.
Don't need a burn ban.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, well, Jamie, we do still want to remind the people, if they are going to burn, that they should call. That they should call in.
Yes.
You know, if they're going to burn an old house down or an old barn or something like that, at least notify.
Advise the dispatch then or the sheriff's office, specifically sheriff's office for county burns.
What's that number?
Uh, eight eight two two eighty. Am I pulling that off the top of my head?
Sure. That was a test.
Sheriff's office.
That's the sheriff's office.
You passed.
Should I pass it?
I don't.
Flesh turd.
I don't know if you saw it, but notify the dispatch center.
And the dispatch center.
That number's eight eight two sixty two ten.
Yep.
Cause they notified.
They do get a lot of calls on things like that matters. They're not called in.
Yeah, cause it shows up on, right, shows up on the CAD then, so then they know it's a controlled burn. So then they don't get, they get a lot of calls of individuals driving by and it saves the fire department from having to run out there, so.
Thank you. All right.
Very good. Thank you. Me too, Jamie. All right, item number eight, action to authorize the chair to sign a contract with Multi Business Solutions Incorporated. And maybe we'll have Natalie come up and Lee, I think you had some information that you were just finishing up.
I think it's kind of a quick one. This is just, um, so I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the agreement with humans that, for, with, uh, multi-business solutions for the Human Resources Service Agreement. So that's the motion.
Okay.
And labor contract negotiations. It's also part, labor contract negotiations is also part of this contract.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
And, okay, sorry.
Second, okay. Motion by Gable, second by Bandus. Now we can have discussion then introduced to everyone. Uh, yeah, anyways, was, what was the part of it that you were finishing up the last?
No, we just had to, we just had to clarify that, that the, uh, the services, um, both Human Resources Services and Labor Contract Negotiation Services, reflected what was in the proposal.
Okay.
And it does, so we went back and forth on that. So the state's attorney has looked at this and it's good to go and, um, so, yeah, so this just formalizes the proposal that we accepted at our last meeting.
All right, very good. Anyone else have anything to add? And we would like to introduce Natalie. And how do you say your last name?
Uh, you said Raymond, like the first name.
All right.
Yep.
Very good.
Now, did you have, did you have some time to spend with Terry and, and get some insight and, uh, because I know we've bumped up uh, his efforts with the labor unions over the past couple of years, rather than wait till, you know, November, December. I think he started about now with the labor people's.
I got my first email from the Teamsters, so they reached out and introduced me.
Right, we have to wait for contact from them. Yeah, we can initiate. They, they contact us.
And we will send your contact, contact information to our department head. So if anybody needs any sort of assistance.
That'd be perfect. And I plan on meeting with them as they have time available to.
Very good. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for attending. Okay, so, item number nine, discussion, possible action to accept a proposal for wage and compensation study. Lee, Lee, you want to do a little explanation?
So let's, yeah, so we, we talked about, let me, let me pull that up here on the screen. I guess I don't really need to. But, uh, we talked about, um, in the past, we, we obtained a proposal, um, from, um, McGrath, uh, I think it was, I mean, I guess I should call up the, uh, there it is.
McGrath Human Resources Group.
Yeah, so McGrath Human Resources Group. Let me just, let me just show, put the cover of the proposal on the screen so people can see what we're talking about. And, um, so we've done these in the past. I think the most recent one is over ten years old. And so basically what this looks at is, you know, are we properly paying people for the work that they're doing? Are they properly compensated for the work that they're doing? Um, and over time, as we, as we do pay raises and, you know, labor contract negotiations and all those things, things tend to get out of skew. So this is a matter of, it's just a matter of stewardship, making sure that we're paying people, uh, properly. I know they can be controversial at times, um, because, you know, some people are going to be, it, it's like, well, maybe you shouldn't be paid quite that much, though that could happen. So then they're not as likely to get a, a raise the next time around. So that's kind of the, that's kind of the tricky part of it. On the other hand, for folks that might be, aren't paying, are not paying quite enough based on the work they're doing, you know, that, that's what this is meant. These experts are meant to figure that out. So in general, that's, that's the idea behind a wage study. So, and if, you know, I know Natalie's looked at this proposal as well. Um, and if, in case people are wondering, this is the same, uh, company. They're out of Illinois. They did this, they did the, uh, the study with the city. So, anyway, that's.
And we do have money in the budget to do this this year, so.
Yeah, that's kind of, yeah, as we're looking at the, the budget, I forget, is it, I can't remember, is it the professional services line within?
Fifty thousand.
Or is it the, there's the other.
So four twenty nine, other current expenditures.
Yeah, so that one.
You had included, um, fifty thousand in there for some kind of study between the courts and inmates?
Right, right, and we didn't do that.
That's what it's in there for, but you have not.
And then, and then some, some, you know, uh, some county employees approached, approached me about this. So then I got a, got the proposal. And, uh, so we, we've looked at this, um, in the past. So, um, since, I would suggest that we go ahead and get this finished. That's, um, that's kind of the point of putting it on the agenda, but, um, interested in other people's comments.
Uh, I, I do have a question. We've got a union contract with our sheriff's department. We've got a contract with our union and the library department. And they all got step raises and et cetera. So now are we going to be throwing all that out and going in and saying, oh, you're, Mr. X is worth so much an hour, Mr. Y is worth so much an hour? And it's, well, I think, I think. Negotiations with individuals instead of, you know, cause we've been trying to treat everybody fairly inequitably when we give them a raise, or we're going to have a new starting pad. Is that what the reason for the study is?
The way, I, I, I personally not been a part of a, a wage and compensation study, but the way I understand it, it's more of a recalibration of the whole, you know, our whole pay, you know, our whole pay scale basically, to make sure that it's on track. I mean, maybe, maybe, I don't know if you've seen it happen more in the past.
The wage and surveys. This survey is probably just going to be a recommendation for you to take action on it. Doesn't mean that you have to agree with it. But, um, I think the question, it came up from one other department that they would like to see how they compare to counties of the same size with the same type of employees to see if we are where we, where we should be.
Yeah, and, yeah, I should have mentioned that, that aspect of it. That's, that, that's, that's part of the study is to, you know, you, you do a market comparison. So it's with other counties, some, you know, based on uh, similar jurisdictions and similar work.
Right, and I would, I would, I would also go for the optional benefit, um, overview study because the benefits for Cottington County employees are pretty good in my opinion. And I think that should be included if you go in, if you go this way.
Yeah, cause that would be taken into account as part of their salary.
Your overall, your overall.
So, so if we would come back with this study and recommendation, it would say that our employees are overcompensated or they're prepared to take pay cut.
Well, I think it depends on how we want to implement that. So this is the recommend, you know, the, the recommendation would be, um, you know, that it's going to be a recommendation for all these guys. Or it might, it might not be a pay cut, but it might be no raise for a certain period of time.
I will tell you, um, back in the nineties, when we had a wage study done, my position was frozen for about three years. I did not get a raise because according to the study, when I was a deputy auditor, um, they thought I was too far ahead of the other staff in the office. So I did, I did have a freeze. And there were a number of us that did have, but then, that was back in the nineties.
Wow, I think I have a.
So I mean, this, this is a, this is a a ying and a yang. This is a dual edged sword.
I mean, I think, you know, the city had this done recently by the same group and, and, uh, I've heard a lot of dissension among city employees. There's been a lot of frustration that's led to some employees even resigning. And, you know, we, we don't want that. I think if we do a compensation classification study and we spend the money because we're looking at what, Lee, twenty five thousand dollars to have this done? Is that right?
Twenty five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
Then we better be ready to open the pocketbook and the checkbook and start paying these employees if it comes back saying that a lot of them are underpaid. And I think that right now we're in the middle of a pandemic. We don't even know what our numbers are going to be. I, I think that this is money that we're just throwing into the wind right now. I'm not saying that our county employees don't deserve to be compensated more. I'm just saying right now is not the right time to do this.
Well, I, I base.
With that.
I base, uh, the employees on, when we have a job opening, we don't generally, or when we advertise for a job, we generally do not have a lack of people applying. So our package must be pretty satisfactory to everybody. And I would be, uh, against spending money at this time.
I don't, um, I don't know that you have to implement it right away. It kind of, just going through all the retirements and the new hires, working with Terry, trying to figure out some of these uh, salaries and steps. Things are a little out of whack, I guess. And it would just kind of be nice to have a better organized system than what we have because of the different raises and the percentages and then the.
The payroll resolution that the county currently has was created in the nineteen nineties.
Yeah.
Over the years, um, it's become skewed because instead of giving a percentage raise for each one of those steps, the board chose to give a flat amount, a dollar amount. That threw the percentages off between the steps in various pay scales, in, in all the pay scales. So that's just a little background of, of the resolution that we currently use and where it came from. It goes back to the nineteen nineties. And it's been modified ever since.
So, I mean, the idea is, you know, you're, you're asking some experts to give us a report on what, you know, what's happened to that over the years and whether or not it's gotten out of skew. And I mean, pretty, it's pretty reasonable to assume that it has since it's been, what, since the, the nineties? So, um, the other, the other thing is, you know, some employees have approached me and said, you know, I think it's time to do this. And so that's, uh, I, I, and I realize, yeah, it can be a controversial thing, but it's a matter of stewardship and taking care of people and compensating them for the work that they do. And in the long run, that provides a better product for our taxpayers. And so that's, that's the idea with this thing. And I understand, you know, it, it, we, we have the money available in the budget for this year if we want it, if we want to make use of that. And, uh, I realize, you know, that, and, you know, we still have control over it. We don't have to accept the recommendation of this consultant if that's, um, if we're uncomfortable with it, but, um, it, these folks seem to be able to do a, a good job. That's, that's why I asked for their proposal, so.
I'll throw my two cents in, Madam Chair. I, I, I know that this is something that we need to do and it needs to be done. I've been through a number of these before and tried to hit the nail on the head. There are some people that are um, really not happy after the results come in because, uh, well, Cindy just.
There were a lot of unhappy employees when the last wage study was done.
What it does primarily is it kind of covers our butt and, and people come and say, well, I'm not being paid fairly well. We did a compensation uh, study and that this is where you're at and so on and so forth. And, and, uh, and it does also take care of those that are falling behind, you know, that aren't being compensated for, for their job. Um, and, um, Commissioner Gable, I know the twenty five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars in the budget, but that doesn't mean we have to spend it.
No, we don't.
You know, it's there, it's, uh, and, and my gut feeling is, uh, the way things are just this year, I would like to postpone it another year and, and something that I think that we need to bring back and take a look at, but let's do it next year. That's my gut feeling. I'd like to, I'd like to hold off a year and, and, um, and see how things work out here this year, cause it's a different year. It's, I think things are kind of all uh, turned upside down. That's my feeling.
No, I, I would offer a couple, a couple of things. Um, one is, you know, the longer you wait, the more, the more this is going to cost us in the long run. So and that, you know, we're going to have to get a different proposal. I would assume the, the prices would change at least a little bit when we do that. And, you know, that's, that's yet another year when, you know, we're either overpaying somebody or we're underpaying somebody. And so if we want to wait, I mean, it's been, what, since this, this study I have in front of me is dated nineteen ninety two. So that's a while ago. So that's almost thirty years. So, um, do we want, do you, I mean.
It can be a cost savings if it turns out that some are being, you know, overcompensated too, and some of those job descriptions.
And I'm chair and, and Commissioner Gable, I don't understand how this could be a cost savings. We're not going to reduce salaries as a result of this early, are we?
No, but it wouldn't. They would be, they could be froze for, you know, several years if they're being over, overcompensated that, you know, otherwise they would typically get their raise. And this may prove that they shouldn't. So.
What's the percentage, of course, I'm asking for names. What's the percentage of employees that have asked for this wage study?
Well, yeah, I don't, I didn't take a survey, so.
Is it two? Is it ten?
No, it's probably about, I guess it's probably about, um, you know, tenish.
Tenish?
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, approached me as a group, so that's.
Plus you would go up to eleven.
Yeah, so that would be, so, but no, I didn't conduct.
How many, how many employees do we have in the county, Cindy?
Uh, full-time employees, we have about ninety four. Um, that number raised to a hundred and forty two when you add in our part-time people and um, the boards, people sitting on boards.
Would all of those people be included in the wage study?
Yeah, the whole, yeah, everybody in the county can include it.
Right, right. Anybody who's part-time, who gets an hourly wage would be.
We're talking about six to eight percent of the people have asked for this.
Well, I didn't conduct a. Survey.
No, no, roughly.
So, somebody approached me, showed me some numbers. I said, yes, that looks, that looks like a reasonable argument. So.
I just was curious and to help me make up my mind.
So I guess, um, are we willing to make a motion to, I mean, we do have discussion, possible action? Is anyone willing to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we, that we go ahead and do this. And specifically, um, it would be to accept a proposal of, and this would, uh, there's a contract available to, to sign. So it'd include authorizing, authorizing the chair to sign. So for the basic compensation study, which is nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, plus the optional benefit overview study that the auditor mentioned for six thousand, eight hundred and sixty five dollars. And the, the total there would be twenty six thousand, seven hundred and fifteen with a, when you package it, they give a thousand dollar discount, so twenty five, seven fifteen. seven fifteen plus expenses, which in the contract would be, um, at most, and this would be travel if they needed to travel here, but they're probably not gonna have to do that as much. Because of COVID, um, would be, uh, up to an additional five thousand, five, five thousand five hundred dollars. So, so that would be my motion.
All right. Do you have a second? I'll second that motion. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. We already devote. Probably should call a roll call.
Okay, I'll call the roll call by District, um, Gable.
Aye.
Waterman.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Van Duzen.
No.
And Hanton.
Yes.
Okay, so that motion fails.
Three to two.
Two to three.
All right. We will move on then to item number ten, action to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of contractual documents for the CARES Act Fund. Um, I wonder, do we have anyone on from First District?
Nobody's come on.
Otherwise Cindy had a meeting.
Yeah, I thought they were going to buzz in.
We got plenty of paper here.
It'll be, yeah, I think.
Well, these are all the documents that we need to take care of in order to qualify for the CARES Act funding. A resolution, um, to execute the contractual documents along with Annex A, which is, um, an agreement between us and the Bureau of Finance and Management outlining responsibilities. Um, so basically it is those two. We did have a meeting with First District, um, myself, Jamie, our emergency management director and Sherry from that same office. And we got a lot of good information. Since we met with the representative for First District, District, they have also had conversations with the state and they made it very clear that if we have questions regarding any of this, we are to go through First District. We are to channel through them and then they will take it on farther because the state does not want sixty-six counties calling them with a thousand questions.
What's, what's our cost? What's the county's cost in this?
Nothing. There is no cost.
No, it's dollars.
This is just an authorization to put it so that it.
So that we, and, and we have been advised that we can use our sheriff's office wage and salaries, which will come to over nine hundred thousand dollars for the time period they are allowing us.
State allocation was one point five.
One point.
Or county allocation.
Was it one point eight or one point five eight? Something like that. Yeah, yeah. Um, we were also advised to apply first for the PP items that we know will be covered. They don't want us to get creative on our requests. They want us, you know, you know, plain and simple. The only wages we would be allowed to apply for would be our sheriff's office. Um, unless we could figure out how much time our nurses, clerical staff spent on COVID related, and I don't know that they tracked any of that, but we have our PPE that we can, um, apply for and this is not to be a hurried process. It, it's not a jam rush to get your money applied for because that amount is there for Cottington County. If Cottington County does not spend that amount, it goes back to the state. If the state does not spend the amount they were allocated by the federal government, it goes back to the federal level.
So is this the money like I've heard from the city? Is this money in the budget right now? You've received a check for this?
No, we have to apply.
You have to.
We have to apply and then we will get, as, as, as our applications go to the state, they will be reviewed by an independent audit company to make sure we are complying with what we're allowed to apply for. And they will review everything and, I mean.
This, this is, this is, this is slightly different than the city that received a check for and now.
No, the city hasn't received those funds either. They've, they've applied for them. What they did last night was they.
You don't get the whole amount. You have to prove your expenses. The city will be, every jurisdiction in the state is the same. Every, the small towns in Cottington County were allotted some.
Based on population.
Some census, yep. And they will probably be working with their local fire departments to figure out if they can spend that money on those things and whatever other expenses to small towns.
So this resolution will be basically agreeing to the process that they establish and the rules for what can be reimbursed.
Are required to have this resolution in place before we apply.
To include audit requirements that if they're gonna look at our books and stuff like that, so.
Yes, what we have to make sure we keep for records, right?
I had jotted down one point eight.
So that's what Cottington County has allocated based on their population is one point eight million. See Watertown is just over five million that they can recruit.
With that being said, I'll make motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of contractual documents for CARE Act Fund. Second.
All right, got a motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries.
And the second part of that is the reimbursement agreement and Annex A, which everyone had in their packets. And it is basic standard grant application.
And I'll make that a motion to approve that as well.
I would second that.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 It's all procedural of what we need to do in order to start trying to receive reimbursement for any of the funds that we have used during the COVID time period. Okay, um, item number twelve, action to approve permits to discharge fireworks. And we have two of them.
Uh, the first one is for a display on July tenth. It's a family show. Um, this property is located in Waverly Township. The Watertown Fire Chief actually signed off on this, but this is actually in the South Shore Fire District, so they have been notified and have not sent any objections. Um, probably should act on these separately.
Okay.
So the first one, the name of the applicant is Kathleen Daigle. And the event is scheduled for July tenth, approximately two hours, consumer fireworks. It's a private show.
Make the motion to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Um, I was contacted by this individual and we have heard from Jamie that the risk of fire should be good this week, so everything should be good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries. Second one.
The second one, the applicant is Darcy Thonbold. Um, it's a July eleventh event scheduled for thirty to forty-five minutes. This property is located in Elmira Township. Um, consumer fireworks also.
So, motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries. All right. Item number thirteen, discussion possible action to approve the purchase of a side dump trailer. Uh, we have our highway suit here, so if he would wanna come forward. Morning, Rick.
Morning.
All right, so this is, we started having this discussion last week and we needed, or two weeks ago, we needed more information, so. I'll let you just start explaining maybe
All right.
what you found out from the last meeting that we had.
Well, the information I just gave you was on the trailer that I had, uh, gotten a quote from. I didn't bring the other one because that one was higher. I see Charlie has given you information on the other trailers. Yeah. The one I never received any information on, the Midland trailer.
This one?
Apparently.
Or?
That's the one that's made, uh, completely in Canada and sold here. The specs, what I got from Butler, you guys should have in your packet like this.
That was from last.
That's what I had asked for last week, you know.
That was last week.
Yep. And, uh.
Or two weeks.
Or two weeks ago, yes. That's what I had asked for when I was looking for a trailer. You know, the one that was here in town, the Demco did not have the same specs. Had the bead bottom, had the single wheel on the back. It was heavier altogether. And that's, I brought, uh, John Snedeker. He's from Butler Machine. He's the one that gave me the, the information, the price and everything. I guess if you have any questions, I see Cougar's here from Peterson Motors. So if you have any questions on either one of them, but, uh,
what's, a couple of questions. Just what, what's the price again? We're talking for this one? What, what's that?
The Truck King. It's forty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. You know, and I, when I looked at the trailer that Peterson Motors had, the price right on the front of it was fifty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. So where they come up with the forty-nine thousand one hundred and then throwing in the wheels and stuff, that.
Is that the Demco?
Yeah, that was the Demco, you know. There's something about the way all this comes together, just, you know.
And we looked at, yes, we did, Rick. We looked at the Demco and you decided that you didn't like the shape of the belly on the bottom primarily. The, uh, there is a difference in the Demco and this side dump. Uh, this one, you said it had electric over air valve. Is that correct?
It's electric over hydraulic.
Or electric over hydraulic and this one had a straight air valve to the Demco.
Come on up. Rick, can you turn that, which?
Just, I don't, we don't have that.
I don't know which trailer we're talking about. It says forty-nine eight. I don't know what that one is.
Rick.
I, I didn't receive any information from those. Charlie got all that information.
So, so we gotta break it down per, per trailer and everything because I don't know anything about these things, guys. So you gotta educate me on the differences and.
You know, these guys are the ones that are self-savvy. You, you didn't get any information unless I was in your office this morning, Rick. I, I tried to make a copy, Charlie, and you know what?
I said, I've got some. I'll bring them.
So what, okay, so, yeah, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, can I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
So, Rick, which, which one of these, sort of several models? I think this is a several models in these columns. Which one, because I don't have the spec sheet from last week.
We are on, uh.
Which one do I look at first?
Oh, a Truck King? Yeah, the TK sixty SSD forty-three. Yep.
Okay, so that's one, that's the forty-nine, okay.
That's forty-nine eighty-three dix.
Okay, that's a six, so sixty thousand pound payload. So sixty SSD four-three-three, direct to second.
Right.
All right.
He's, he's on the Truck King.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure cuz there's several models somewhere.
Okay. No, this is the new one from today, I think.
Yeah, I gave you that this morning. Yep, I'm sorry.
Is it comparable to this? Okay. To the bid that we had. Okay, but I don't know.
You know, we, yeah, I guess I have one question and, and I know, um, I, in, in the specs that I went over those last week, I don't think Rick requested a cover or, um, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, I, I would really like to see, I, I live in the truck world. You guys build them, but I live seven miles north on Old Eighty-One and I have a hundred trucks that go by my place just like this by noon every day.
Right.
Put a damn cover on it. Uh, I don't care, Rick. You may be hauling, uh, I don't care, boulders, but some, but someday you are gonna haul a load of dirt or load of gravel and it's gonna be sifting. And even if you have riprap and, and us as consumers out there that repair our windshield several times a year, at least we look up and we see a cover on it, we can at least not pull over to the side and hope and pray that we don't get a rock to the windshield. Okay, now maybe this is what will break the ice here. What would it add? What would cost to add a cover on this one, this one, this one? There you go.
Okay.
Is there a reason why you don't wanna cover on it?
Well.
Is there a concern?
For one, the riprap, granted, holds down over the side, but can be very hard.
But if these are hard covers.
We'll get haul trees and all kinds of stuff. It's just one less thing that'll get damaged that we have to repair. You know, we have, currently we have two trucks, uh, straight trucks that have, uh, tarp's on. The only time we use those tarp's is if we have to go to land. And that is the only time they get used because they're rolled up out of the way so they don't get damaged.
So I might have a suggestion here just because this has just gotten way too much confusing, this, that, and, um, maybe it'd be better if we do the formal bid process because then that way you can say exactly what you want, give each one a chance to bid. Nobody's gonna be able to see what the other one did. At this point, everybody has seen everything and I don't know if it's a fair process. I don't know. It's just my suggestion.
Anything under fifty thousand doesn't have to be bidded, but we're only two hundred dollars off.
Not required, but legislative audit always recommends if you're close to that.
And we're close.
If you're close to that amount, it does not, you're not recruited from advertising and taking formal bids.
Right.
That's part of the tarp deal also. Doesn't matter which one you put it on, you're gonna go over the fifty thousand.
You could be, you could add that as an option.
Yeah.
On, on either bid, on any bid.
There is one thing if we, if we do go to a bid thing. You're going to delay what we need for getting our roads in better condition by how long?
I don't know, but I just don't feel comfortable with the way this is done with having one and then another sees what the other one already did and then we're throwing in things to just, I just don't.
I don't feel comfortable with this guy added on.
No.
Nor, normally, normally we accept whatever is recommended by our department heads, no questions asked. Uh, I happen to know a little bit about this stuff and I suck, as a liaison, I went looking. Uh, I'm not taking anything for granted from no, no place anymore. Anytime something comes up, you can expect it to come out of left field. Uh, I have just as much right to put this forward as you do, you did to go look. So.
So is everyone else okay? Should we just do the formal bid process? That's your call. It's yours.
So you're, you're saying?
We'll say somewhere down the road, we might put a bid together, but at this point, we'll hire done what we need to have done.
So this is.
Charlie, let him talk.
We're going about this all in a different situation, so I, I suggest that we just pull this out and be done.
So.
Well, somewhere down the road, I'll put it in my budget and we'll buy one.
So this is not as much of emergency as you were asking for.
Well, it is, but it just got shoved under the bus.
If we, we're, we're, we have, we can buy a trailer. It's, I would prefer to buy a trailer locally and the money is the same. There's good and bad points from all trailers.
Yes, there is.
But if that's not what you want, then you wanna table it, then let's just table it and we'll put it up for a bid in next year's budget.
There's no reason to table. We don't need to table. You just don't.
We just won't take action on it. We won't. It's, it's discussion possible action.
Just, hold on just a second. I think we're missing a point here, Rick. And, and the point that I would like to ask you about is obviously you felt this was a necessary item. Otherwise you wouldn't have come to the commission to request it. So what is this going to do for your operation if this doesn't get done?
I'll be able to hire somebody to do it. That's basically what it'll be. We'll hire someone. We'll hire someone, I got a, uh, invitation, not an invitation, but a card this morning to call somebody, I've already made a couple of calls. To get prices, so.
Um, question, so, and as far as the, the annual amount, the, the amount for this year that you would need to do that to contract the work, um. I mean, I'm guessing that fits well with them, that what the cost of this trailer would be, or is that, is it something that we have to look at another bidding process? I just wanna.
A bid should, should fall in there.
Okay.
Or you could still do, decide to do the bidding process, it's just, I don't know how long. If you need that, yeah, if the need becomes greater than what you're able to hire done, then.
Sounds alright to me. If you can hire it done this year and, and we'll let the dust settle and the, uh, approach it again, if you wanna put it in your budget later.
Sounds good to me.
All right, yeah, thanks, Rick.
Thanks for your time.
We got something else for you here, we got another item for Rick with Banner. Okay, item number fourteen, action to approve a contract with Banner Associates regarding haul road evaluation.
This is for Banner to assess the haul roads that Apex, the, the Apex operation upon the north end of the county. There's just, I think there's fourteen turbines, something like that going in Cottington County, the rest will be in Grant County. But we have to have the road assessed, they'll do it, we'll do it, and this is just.
Is Dakota Range wind development the same as Apex?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's too many names, sorry.
I'll move to approve the contract with the Banner.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, and this is what we've done with the other ones as well, we get, we get all these, um.
Is this the same, same agreement?
Yes.
Nothing's changed in it?
Yeah, it should be the same, it's just not quite as much because it's a smaller footprint where they're gonna be at, so.
And this is a, this is something we can bill Apex for, based, okay.
Yes.
Based on what it costs us.
And I've, uh, had contact with the, the developer, or not the developer, the, the people that are going to build the towers and stuff, and I had told them that, uh, they owe twenty-five hundred dollars right off the top for when we put this together, that the Dakota Range was supposed to pay. And we never saw them again after it was signed, so.
We do have, we have received a payment, um, from a Crown Ridge, Crown Ridge Wind Two in amount of twenty-four, twenty-six thousand dollars, and we will do an automatic supplement to Rick's budget after we pay the Banner bill in July. So it's coming down.
Every, every time I get a bill from Banner, I send it right to Next Era.
We invoice it to the, to recoup our costs.
Send me a check.
Yep.
Yeah, Next Era is Crown Ridge, Apex is Dakota Range.
Yes, XL.
The witch can's in there somewhere.
They subbed it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, we have motion, the second, correct, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, this, item number fifteen, discussion possible action to designate use of a NACO Leadership Academy Scholarship. Sarah.
That was just the, just to kind of follow up on, you probably, everybody's probably got the same emails. And so we get, basically you got a, a freebie, it's an online course, um. It's, it can be for anybody in the county, so I just wanna start the discussion, I don't think we can make a decision on this one.
No.
On who to, but it's basically a pre-scholarship, it's a good online course on leadership, has, you know, retired general Colin Powell is the guy, the primary instructor, so it's kind of cool. But it's, it's, these kind of courses cost, you know, a lot of money typically, so this is, you know, a couple thousand dollars typically, so. Um, but the county has one to, to use, and that's done through NACO, so, you know, I guess maybe part, I just wanna mention it, if, if any department heads hear about this, if you have somebody in mind. Um, you know, we can decide that.
Take advantage of it, because, yeah, he spoke at the ledge conference and I was really impressed, he was a neat guy.
Was there any, any kind of literature that went with this that we could?
Yeah, I can.
Send out to department heads?
Let me, let me word that to you, and it's in it, yeah.
Look it over?
Yeah.
It's a little dedication though for, I mean, it's.
Yeah, so it's gonna be, there's a time commitment to, to do that.
Okay.
So, so I, I guess for, for now, just, uh, just wanted to make mention of it, and, uh, it's been something, I, I know all you guys have seen it in your inboxes as well, so. And somehow, for some reason, they emailed me to follow up and said, hey, what are you guys gonna do about it, so. So.
All right, well, we can leave it on, I suppose, until we would find an individual who would wanna do it, just leave it on the agenda, so if that was something would come up in between, okay. Item number sixteen, discussion possible action on COVID-nineteen practices and procedures, I don't have anything, anyone?
Um, we do have banners, uh, that we have ordered from Jergens Printing to hang at Memorial Park and the Extension Center. It's kind of a disclaimer for the county that you're here, we realize, you know, you may be exposed and you are responsible, so. Um, I know they're working on them, they are just not ready yet.
Can I, does somebody have the, the template for the sign? The verbiage on the sign, can you email that to me?
I will.
Okay.
Yep, I got it from Inaha County.
Actually, I have the proof that Jergens Printing sent me, so remind me, and I can forward that, so you can exactly see what.
I was contacted by another individual that wants to use the same verbiage for.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because it actually has our, Memorial Park and Extension.
And Extension, it has the wording for our facilities, yeah.
Yeah, it was a good, you know, really good banner.
Here we go.
All right.
Just one thing on the COVID thing, what we're at, we're kind of having a continuing discussion about the flow within this building, especially on court days, so we're gonna be, we're trying to, trying to tweak that a little bit. You know, particularly on the ground floor, when people come in and they're waiting for, uh, to go through security, making sure that we can figure out how to keep people spaced out when there's a few, you know, say a chunk or a clump of people that need to come in for a court proceeding.
And then for our, just the individuals who wanna do their daily or whatever court business or courthouse business, so.
Are we at a point where we could, uh, uh, release our individual that keeps track of numbers in the office?
I've been talking to Steve actually just this morning, again, we're gonna look at that, maybe, yes, it's getting to where, maybe on court days, and he's very aware and he's very, uh, gracious about, yeah, no sense of being here if he's not needed, it's, it's getting a little, um, less. But on court days, of course, we may need him for a portion of the time, and then I did talk to Becky, so, you know, we had a real influx right away of, of all the court individuals that were on backlog because of, you know, being put off, so that's why we really had a rush to begin with. Where that might be leveling out a little bit and kind of get back to a normal sort of schedule as well, so, yes, we will be not utilizing that individual if we don't need to, so. Action, or, uh, item number seventeen, action to approve claims for payment.
Uh, the claims we have today are salary claims for the month of June, total salary claims are five-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand three-hundred-and-seventy dollars and thirty-nine cents, nothing out of the ordinary this month.
All right, do we have a motion and a second on that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Gables, second, well, they're pointing at each other.
Go ahead, Charlie.
All right, second by Waterman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, that motion carries. Item number eighteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements, do you have any?
No, I'm headed.
All right, um, number nineteen, action to approve personnel changes, we have several of those.
Uh, the first personnel change is Mary Franzen, the deputy register of deeds, she's doing anniversary step increase to step thirteen. Um, it was discovered that, um, one of our deputy sheriffs did not get his step increase in two thousand nineteen. And per our policy manual, it is the responsibility of the employee and the department head to get those, that paperwork to the auditor's office, so. Um, Adam Reeves, deputy sheriff, he should have gotten an increase on June first of two thousand nineteen to move to step seven. That paperwork was not submitted to us. Um, so the sheriff has submitted, um, a personnel transaction for that time period. And then he was also due his anniversary step increase this June to step eight. So those are both in there, Melissa Holtquist is a corrections officer, do an anniversary step increase to step nine. Amalia Varianto is also a correction officer, do a step increase to step five. Wes Jennings is a corrections officer, do a step increase to step ten. Trevor Schimmel is a deputy sheriff, he's do a step increase to step eight. Um, Carrie Cranbrink has been hired as the welfare assistant and she will sign her, her, her paperwork uh, when she starts in the office. And she'll go to start at step three, she's a part-time welfare assistant. Um, the next one, and I don't think you got all of these because they came in late. Um, you authorize the facilities manager to hire a temporary building maintenance for one year. And that individual is Ron Hartley, he'll start at step four. And then a seasonal sprayer for the weed department, Joshua Bury, will start at step one.
Let's spend house, please, anytime.
You mentioned, you said Mary Tuitt, Mary, did you say Mary Franzen at the beginning?
Yeah, Mary Franzen is the deputy register of deeds.
Yeah, I just didn't have her in the pod.
Yes, and the number of these came in too late.
Okay.
Last week on Adam Reeves, we approved a change of status, what was that step two?
That, that's where we discovered the error, or Adam discovered it, I guess, um. We approved him moving to step seven, when in fact, he should have gone to step eight because of the oversight of missing last year's step increase, last year he should have gone to step seven.
So that's what we approved last week.
Right, right, step seven, yes, yep.
Okay.
So he should be at step eight per the sheriff's recommendation, so we, what we will have to do is go back an entire year and pay him, um, the back pay that he did not receive.
So I wonder.
What happened there again?
I, I don't know, we did not get the personnel change, I cannot tell you exactly what happened, but according to the personnel policy, it's the responsibility of the department head and the employee to submit a personnel change to the auditor's office.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
All right, we got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, that motion carries, travel requests, we have one.
Oh, we have one, and then I'm just gonna note that I will be traveling for an executive board meeting, um, this week, so I will be out of the office tomorrow and Thursday, and there is no cost to the county on that because I am reimbursed by the South Dakota Association of County Officials. The other travel request is for the director of equalization and to appraisers to attend an egg adjustment workshop.
So.
Motion, a second by Van Dusen, any other discussion?
Hearing none, I'm sorry, who was the motion?
A motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen.
Van Dusen, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. All right. Well. This notice, this is just something for our information, Cindy.
Yeah, that, um, notice to adjacent landowners, um, it's regarding uh, some action the city is going to take, apparently the county owns some property close to where this is, and they are required to notify the county.
Okay. That's at the bottom of my pile, okay, um. Twenty-one, I don't know, evidently nobody called in or they would let us know, so we don't have, um, anything that, any old business that we need to take care of?
I don't know if this would fall under old business or, or open or whatever, but, uh, Cindy, you sent us a.
Oh, yes.
In reference to the.
The casino, yes.
And, uh, I guess my opinion is I'm not happy with the whole situation, but if we have an open door here and can get the checks cashed, I think we better take it and run.
Um, so a little bit of background, uh, last year we received our payments from the, the tribe for the Dakota Sioux Casino. And they were less than what we anticipated, um, the tribe is maintaining that their compact with the state reflects what we should be paid, our, we disagree on that, but, um, in the, in the long run, I did speak with Roberts County, they have accepted last year's payment and this year's payment. If we want to accept last year's payment, we will, I will need a letter from you um, to send to the tribe because those checks can no longer be cashed, they are outdated. And then, um, if you want me to move forward and accept this year's payment, and then I can make the payments to uh, the city of Watertown and, um, Rawville Township based on our prior year splits.
This, this be, and, and you send a copy of the check or?
Yep.
That's basically negotiated to the state, isn't it?
We don't know.
No, not, not really, the county had an agreement.
Well, can I? County had agreement, but we were kind of left out on the cold when we got a different amount, is that, we were left out of the loop.
The tribe, the tribe is maintaining that their compact with the state should reflect the payment they sent to us, but.
Commissioner Gable.
So, so the, yeah, so the compact is negotiated by the state, it, and it really is kind of, and the text of the memorandum between the tribe and the various counties is in the compact, so there's, and we don't have apparently nobody, once that compact is signed, has the power to change the memorandum, now the tribe has not approached us to execute a memorandum of understanding, or memorandum of agreement between the county and the tribe. So that's kind of the, it's like, well, when are you gonna do that, is kind of our question, and that's why we kind of weren't clear, that's why we didn't cash the checks last, last year, it's like, well, where did this amount come from, because we haven't got a memorandum of agreement.
Checks, are we acknowledging?
So that's kind of, so that's kind of the, the question, so we have to, the, the letter that we write probably needs to discuss those points, like, were you guys thinking about doing this, basically?
I also think this, go ahead. The city maybe should have some say in this as well, because their amounts are less also, because they get a portion and we get a portion, so all of our amounts, so it's kind of like, are they gonna be okay with that same?
To try to negotiate the, the co- compact or whatever the tribe wants to call it, we've had the city very involved. The city has been involved in, uh, uh, city attorney and, and the state's attorney and.
The city's involvement is based on fire protection.
That's correct, yeah, and, uh, but i- it's time we move on it and take what they give us and run, I guess, and, and so that's my. And yes, we need to write a letter.
Carefully worded letter.
Very, yeah, right, and I, and who should write that letter, I know who is a really, a good, um, a letter writer, and that's the city attorney. He writes good letters, because he's been communicating with them, you know, over the past year or so, and I don't know if, I hate to nominate him to write the letter without him being here.
Yeah, I can contact Matt and just kind of let him know what we're thinking and just.
And Becky.
Yeah, and then we'll, yes, yeah.
Between the two of them.
Get a letter wrote, whether we're going to acknowledge that payment or not, or what their feelings are, so.
Well, I think, I think.
And respectfully request reissuance of the checks.
We have to have a consensus here that, is that all right, is we go ahead and accept that?
This issue has gone all the way up to peer, right, I mean, it's down to the governor's office, and yeah.
Nothing is progressed.
No, we're not gonna see an increase in monies, are we?
No.
So, uh, my consensus is take the money and write a letter and get the other money back.
Yeah.
We're talking a hundred and ninety, a hundred and eighty-two, three thousand?
For the last two years, yes, nine, it's about ninety thousand per year and then.
What was it supposed to be, Cindy?
Oh, my word, this about.
Was it two hundred and fifty thousand, something like that? Based on what our last agreement looked like.
Right, so the compact basically.
That's based on.
By slot, you two, just, just an overall, the age of the revenue, the game revenue, I think, so.
It's based on gaming revenue.
Yes.
Supposed to have numerous slots.
The, the thing I would rather would have negotiated with the state.
I don't really think they negotiated with the state either, because I've had contact with the state and the states have kept living long.
So, it's gonna go to, to Matt, Brenda, you're gonna contact?
Yes, I will contact Matt, and then the state's attorney and get their, have them help us on that note, just the best process to go. All right. Item twenty-three, new business, any new business? How about twenty-four for the open?
Uh, just to give you a heads up, the treasurer is, um, working towards a tax. Uh, just to give you a heads up, the treasurer is, um, working towards a tax deed sale for the properties that we have taken by tax deed proceedings this year, so next week's agenda will have, um, various actions to move forward with that. Um, she's gonna look for people to appraise the properties that she has taken and get those back on the tax rolls.
All right, is there several?
There are several. I cannot tell you where they're at right now.
All right, that's fine. Um, okay, item number twenty-five, action to enter into an executive session. Does anyone have any reason?
Move to adjourn.
And a motion by Johnson to adjourn, second by Waterman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. We are adjourned.